Well, directions to which are indicated by the exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Granville Street, which is the street that runs beside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance as needed. In the case of a tornado warning, please exit this room into the hallway, or we will all remain until it is safe to exit. In any event of an active shooter in the building, if there is an accessible escape path, please run and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found, and lock any doors that you can. And as a last resort, and only if your life is in imminent danger, please fight. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, would you please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for another day of life, health, and strength. We thank you for those who have gathered, those who might be on the way. Pleasure that you continue to keep us on one accord, or we might do the business of Edgecombe County. This is asking your son's name. Amen.
Mr. Evans?
You have before you a number of budget amendments. There are two, the first two that need your approval. The first budget amendment, budget amendment number one. This is a, excuse me, a grant that was received in the sheriff's office last fiscal year, the balance of which we're asking we roll forward to the current fiscal year by this budget amendment. Second budget amendment is also grant funds related to the E-911 funds received by the county, and that's rolling that from the E-911 fund balance, to roll those forward as well to be appropriated to use. The rest are for your information. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. I recommend that you approve budget amendments number one and two as presented.
Motion? Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign, aye. All opposed? Hearing none. The budget amendments are approved. Next, Mr. Evans.
Next, I'm going to ask our planning director, Mr. Durbin Spell, to come to the podium. As he is approaching, just as a way of reminder to us and information for the public that's here, we've had companies to come and show interest in building data centers here in the county, and currently, we don't have anything in our unified development ordinance that speaks specifically to a data center or anything like that. And therefore, staff and I recommended that we consider doing a text amendment. That language was put together and presented to the planning board, and they gave some consideration. And so now, Mr. Spell is going to review the recommendation as it's presented from the planning board.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
So, what you have in front of you are text amendment to add both data center and crypto mining operation uses and related terms to the UDO. Crypto mining will be permitted under the conditional rezoning process in the general industrial M2 district, and that's allowed as part of the planned development district. Data center will be permitted by right in the general industrial M2 district, as well be allowed as a part of a planned development. For any use, data center or cryptocurrency, crypto mining use, that will have to go through the conditional rezoning process or the planned development process. Neighborhood meeting will be mandatory. The developer will have to hold that meeting prior to submitting application for either one of those processes. And regarding setbacks and buffers, so in the original draft, the original setback was set for 50 feet. Planning board recommended increasing that to 100 feet from the lot line. Also, the original setback for these uses from residential zoning districts were set at 500 feet. The planning board recommended that while, you know, that setback remains, that it'll be, it would only apply to those properties, those residential properties that have a dwelling permitted or current on the property. Also, as for the buffer, a type C buffer would be required, in which also additional landscaping may be required as well, that would help the use meet the noise standards level. So currently, in the general industrial M2 district, there are no height requirements for any uses. However, height restrictions could be proposed as a condition for the conditional rezoning and planned development processes, if the applicant accepts those conditions. As regarding maximum noise levels for uses that share lot lines with properties that have dwellings on them, maximum noise levels are set for 60 DBA in the daytime and 50 DBA at night. And for all other cases, the original draft had DBAs going to 75. The planning board recommended that that limit be lowered to 60. And as for a reference, 60 DBA, that'd be the same sound as someone, you having a conversation with somebody, or if you go to like, a store, food line, Walmart, you hear a background music. 75 DBA, that'd be the same as if you were running a vacuum cleaner in the room. As far as utility usage, data centers must receive annual attestations if using public electricity and water, and these will come on an annual basis as part of their annual zoning compliance permit requirements. On-site generators shall be fully enclosed, meet relevant fire standards, and also receive all required state permits. The planning board recommendation was to include federal permits, if any are required. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Spells?
The attestation of water and electricity, so that's just stating what they plan to use? They just have to meet with our planning, or our utility department to determine what they plan to use that year, or what they used the previous year?
They will have to state to us what their expected, expected use amount would be, and then we will have to confirm that that amount is available, yes.
And what if it's not?
Then it won't be approved.
And so then they just have to shut down?
Or they'd have to make some adjustments to be able to bring it to a level that capacity is available.
Do we set those levels internally, that we would say that they are allowed, or is it, if there's capacity, they're just allowed to take all the capacity that's there?
Essentially, as it would be for any other user. They could use whatever capacity is available.
I guess my question is, do we need to put that in our UDO, or do we need to look at our utility department and see if there needs to be some thresholds put in to that?
What I would suggest that you allow us to do is, let's take this under consideration, and when we bring this back for public hearing, if we suggest there be any additional changes, we make that to you at that time. And just for clarification, for those who are here in the audience, this is being presented tonight to ask the board to call for a public hearing that will be held, we anticipate to be held at the October 6 meeting. A copy of this will be made available in our offices, will be posted on the county's website, and then at that meeting, there will be a public hearing. So anyone here, any citizen that will want to come and speak about these proposed text amendments will be able to do so at the October 6 meeting.
You did say for the data centers, neighborhood meetings are required?
Well, for those projects that will have to go through the conditional rezoning process and/or the planned development process, now, and again, for any center that's going to the general industrial M2 zoning district, that requirement is not mandatory.
So it's optional for the, I think I was reading something, the board can require, this board, it can be, it can be required?
No, no, it's, so, so any center that's going to the M2 district, that requirement is optional, meaning that the developer do not have to provide that meeting. But if a center, for example, they see some, a developer sees a parcel that's currently zoned AR-30, and they want to locate a data center on that parcel, so they will have to rezone that parcel either to a conditional M2 district or planned development district, in which then, they will have to, you know, start with the neighborhood meeting.
I think one of the things you said to me was, look, we got two sound levels, one for the day, well, just about, that's what we're going to, just about, one for the day. It sounds like that's going to get a bit confusing, in terms of how you, how that's going to be monitored, in terms of you got to monitor that day, and you got to monitor that night.
Most proposals is they build that into their system, so it's constantly monitored, then the county or whatever would have access to that system that they've installed. That's how I generally heard that.
In other words, they'll have some type of technology to make that happen?
Essentially, I think they put it on their barrier, and then the county has access to that information, is the way that I was told about that.
And also, as a note, before they can get a certificate of occupancy, as is in the proposed text amendment, it would require the county to get a third-party professional to come and verify that it meets those sound limits.
I'm listening, but, you know, it just sounds like some of this is just based on the, some maybe opposition we have, we are overreaching. It sounds to me that some of this is overreaching, but we'll get there, okay? Go ahead.
I do want to point out, you'll see the map that's on display here. As Mr. Spell mentioned, the proposed text amendment would allow it in M2 zone with the conditions that go with it. And you'll see, and if, Jason, if you could zoom in some on that map, you'll see the big purple, the biggest purple area, M2, that's, that's Kingsborough.
Any other questions or comments?
And then just north of it, there are a couple of smaller parcels that are, that are M2 as well. So it's very limited where this would be permitted, even with the development standards as suggested.
The only thing I wanted to clarify for the public is, by us going this route, this is the, what we can put as conditions on. So if there's any suggestions about adding conditions or changes, it needs to, if it's zoned M2, this is the only time where we can say, this is the, this is the limit of what you can, this is the only time we can put those conditions.
That can be changed between now and at the public hearing time.
That's right.
Until such time as we.
But if it's in M2 already, if it's zoned there, we don't have a way of going and saying, well, we want this project to only have a 50 decibel.
Right, right.
Limit. Correct.
Right. Any other points or any other questions or comments? Hearing none, any questions to call a public hearing?
Yes, sir, at your October 6 meeting.
Do I hear a motion? Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the voting sign, aye. All opposed, the public hearing is called. Thank you, Mr. Spell. Next, Mr. Evans.
Next on the agenda, we have your two candidates for temporary appointment for Commissioner District 7. The two candidates under consideration for the temporary appointment to Commissioner District 7 are here tonight to present to the board and to the public that's here or that might be watching by video. Each candidate will be given time to introduce themselves, share why they are interested in the seat, and explain why they believe they are the best candidate to serve. You may, if you choose, take the opportunity to ask questions. As you have planned, no action will be taken on the appointment at this meeting. Instead, you will hear directly from the candidates in preparation for consideration at the October regular meeting. On Tuesday, September 16, the board's personnel committee, consisting of Commissioners Harris, Powell, and Thorne, conducted preliminary interviews with both candidates. A written summary of the interviews will be provided to you in advance of the October meeting. In addition, Commissioner Harris will present an overview of the committee's interviews during the October meeting. As a reminder to the board and for clarity to the public, the adopted procedure is, one, the candidates were confirmed as eligible by our clerk, planning director, and the elections director. Applications were reviewed by the personnel committee, which conducted interviews. The candidates now have the opportunity to present publicly to the full board at this special meeting. And at your October regular meeting, the board will consider making the appointment. Provided that there is a quorum at that meeting, any commissioner may make a motion to appoint a candidate, which requires a second. A majority vote of the board members present, provided there a quorum is established, is required for an appointment. If no candidate receives a majority vote, the board may either leave the seat vacant, table the matter for future consideration, or reopen the application process. You'll see that you have in your agenda packet, the applications of both the candidates. And Mr. Chairman, if you want to call them up, in the order that you have their applications in your packet, the first one would be Mr. John Manley.
Okay, just one other announcement, is that the intent is to, we will approve whoever the candidate is, they will be sworn at our November meeting. Whoever will be sworn, is that correct? Mr. Manley, would you please come forward?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I certainly appreciate this opportunity to be here today to share with you some information about myself, and why I'm interested in the position, as well as why I feel I'm best qualified for the position as well. So just briefly about me, I'm, again, my name is John Manley. I've been married for 38 years to Evelyn Bell of Enfield, North Carolina. We have one daughter, two grandsons, Brian and James, four great-grandchildren, Zay, Zariel, Brayden, and Kayla. And currently, I serve as a treasurer, finance officer for my church, Thorne's Chapel Missionary Baptist Church in Rocky Mountain. This position I've held for now just a little over a year. Prior to that, what I want to now share with you about is really my profession, what I did for, what I've been doing ever since I was old enough to have a public job. So for 41 years, I served as a full-time law enforcement officer. 32 of those years, well, 28 of those years and four of those years put together, 32, I served in the town of Enfield and the city of Rocky Mountain. Seven, the last seven years, and I was in Rock Island, I was the chief of police there. I had an operating budget approximately 14, 15 million, 232 employees at that time, 175 After leaving the city of Rocky Mountain, I was requested to come to the city of Elizabeth City by the city manager at that time, was named Richard Olson. The police chief there had retired, and they wanted me to serve as an interim capacity. He asked me to do what was called an operational analysis and managerial analysis of the department, and helped them hire, along with the HR director, a new permanent police chief. I did that, and that study was presented to the city manager, and it was presented before the city council, and they adopted it as a blueprint for the new chief to move the organization forward. After leaving there, about six months later, I got a call to come to Elizabeth City State University to serve as an interim. How that come about was, I had been serving on a commission, North Carolina Criminal Justice and Training Standards Commission for several years, working with the vice president of campus safety and security for the UNC system. In those rooms and those discussions over time, he saw and thought that I would probably be the best person to come and deal with the compliance issues or lack of compliance issues at Elizabeth City State University. I went there to serve as an interim, was planning to stay three to six months. Goddamn liked it. And then I applied, and I stayed another eight and a half years. So putting those two terms, times together, the time at Enfield, the time in Rocky Mountain, the time in Elizabeth City, is 41 years. So you see, I have a long life of public service. After retiring in October of 2021 from Elizabeth City State, tell you the truth, I got bored, sitting at home, and I asked Sheriff Stone, did he have some work for a man like me to do, and he did. And I went to work as a deputy, as a person working in the courthouse, working the metal detector, meeting and greeting citizens that come, that have business for court by either clerk's office. I did that up until June of this past, this past January. Still on, but I don't work, okay? So for several years, I was a volunteer, as in communities and schools, that's what it was called, well, it used to be called citizen school, but communities and schools. I served on the board of directors for a good little while. Even though at one time, I think Ms. Watson Best was our director. Having done that for several years, I also served as a past state president of North State Law Enforcement Association, which is a pretty large association across the state of North Carolina. I'm a graduate of FBI National Academy, and I'm a graduate of the North Carolina School of Government at Chapel Hill, which dealt with municipal and county government. So having said that again, that's, that's my background. Now, why am I interested in the position, the temporary? Well, it didn't date back to the other night, when Council Commissioner Hines decided that he was going to take a lead. It actually dates back to 2011, when I retired. Reverend Hines, Wayne, I refer to him sometimes, Commissioner Hines, lives two doors from me. So we talked, and I told him then, I asked him, and I said, whenever you decide you are no longer going to run, I want your endorsement, and I'm going to run. Now, why didn't I run then, if I was so interested? The number one reason to run there, and they run nowhere, and weren't even thinking about running, because I was satisfied with the work of Commissioner Hines, as well as this board. Told the committee the other day, I have no issue. I'm just a person who wants to serve, want to continue to build partnerships, collaborations, and work to try to remove Edgecombe County forward and its economic base. Stickler for numbers, very interested in growth. So that's one of the reasons, is to partner. And then in District 7, someone was asking me, what are the issues? Well, District 7 largely is in the city of Rocky Mountain, part of, is out in the county. There are community meetings that are held all the time, monthly, at Thorne's Chapel Church by Meadowbrook Association. In those meetings, I can, what you hear from citizens' concerns is typically, they may talk about abandoned houses, abandoned vehicles, sometimes crime, sometimes a disorderly house. But usually, all those locations, those things, those topics or things are addressed by the city of Rocky Mountain through its various departments. That's what you hear. And those issues, we make sure, if nobody's there from the city, since I have experienced with the city, I know who to contact. So you play as a liaison between the citizens and the community and the city. So in other words, what I'm trying to tell you, that's a song about boots on the ground. I've had boots on the ground for a long time, in the city of Rocky Mountain, all over Edgecombe County, all over the state of North Carolina, as a matter of fact. And so Commissioners, I'm a public servant at heart. I believe in serving. So that's ultimately why I'm here. No issue. I guess you find it strange, but I don't have an issue. To me, y'all get A+. But I have no issue that I'm running on, okay? Now, why I believe I'm the best candidate, best qualified? I live in the district and have lived for, in that district for about 35 years. I've been addressing issues in and around the district and across the city for a number of years. I'm open-minded, I'm committed, and I'm dedicated. Got a proven record of work. Remember I just said earlier, I was requested to go to Elizabeth City. I was requested to go to Elizabeth City State University. I requested to go to NASCAR's Sheriff's Department. But everywhere I went since I was retired, I was requested to go. Here, I'm requesting to come here, because I want to serve. I'm a graduate of North Carolina School of Government, which gives me some understanding, I think, of how government's supposed to be, even though I have worked in government. I have some general understanding. I have a graduate degree in public administration, which gave me a real great understanding of how about governmental services. See, having worked in law enforcement for so long, you tend to, you know, you want everything for your agency and for your department, but you ultimately have to think about all of the governmental services that a city or county has to offer, and then make your request and see how we best do this together, because no one department or no one agency can get all of the resources of a city or a county. So I have that background. So I bring to you a strong commitment for governance with fairness, integrity, and openness. When people are in it, attentive to detail, I get things done with a clear understanding of fiscal responsibility. My role at the church as a treasurer sometimes doesn't be, is not so popular, because where our pastor operates, and he knew when he recommended me for the position, was the bottom line is, if we don't have the money, we don't spend it. So I say here to you, all these Commissioners, I'm going to bring to you the person, if you can't find a way to make sure we're not going broke, we don't spend it. Must operate within the capacity of your revenue, that's where I feel, that's where I stand. I will never deviate from that. I run my house that way. So to you all, to each Commissioner here, thank you. I respectfully request your vote. When you do vote, and I promise you, with, I'll be appointed, I'm going to hit the ground with working, learning as much as I can about what it is that you've been doing, and what it is that we ought to do, and trying to learn each one of you on a more personal level, so that we can better work together. Thank you.
Any questions, any questions for Mr. Manley? Any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Mr. Wood?
of fiscal responsibility. My role at the church as a treasurer sometime doesn't be, is not so popular. Because where our pastor operates, and he knew when he recommended me for the position was, the bottom line is, if we don't have the money, we don't spend it. So I say here to you, all these commissioners, I'm gonna bring to you the person, if you can't find a way to make sure we're not going broke, we don't spend it. Must operate within the capacity of your revenue, that's where I feel, that's where I stand. I will never deviate from that. I run my house that way. So to you all, to each commissioner here, thank you. I respectfully request your vote. When you do vote, and I promise you, with I be appointed, I'm gonna hit the ground, working, learning as much as I can about what it is that you've been doing and what it is that we ought to do. And trying to learn each one of you on a more personal level so that we can better work together. Thank you.
Any question, any question for Mr. Mann? Any question? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Wood?
In effort to not prolong things, I have to say, I did a short little put together there. So there's like, are there any questions you may be able to ask me from that as well as from my presentation? First of all, I want to thank you, the county commissioner board, for inviting me to this special call meeting. It's one that I not take lightly. It's one that I treasure and hopefully it can do, make a difference in. Myself likewise have known Reverend Heinz for many, many years. We worked together, believe it or not, at the police department along with Mr. Mann here. We all have some, a lot of the same common things. I could have taken his, his actual resume he just gave y'all and I could put my name on it and almost the same. Educational levels are a little bit different, some places we've come from are a little bit different. But where I want to tell you I came from was right here at Edgecombe County. I was born and raised in Edgecombe County, in the northern part of Edgecombe County, Bitterboro, exactly. And as I came through Edgecombe County, I was, I worked the fields of Edgecombe County. As a little kid, I was in the fields, I ate the dirt in Edgecombe County. So I'm an Edgecombe County homegrown kid. I attended Edgecombe County schools. I raised my family, I graduated from Edgecombe County schools, I raised my family in Edgecombe County. I spent my entire professional career and mostly within the Edgecombe County area. My assignments, when I was in Rocky Mount Police Department, for the most part, was in the South Rocky Mount area and in Edgecombe County area for better than eighty percent of the time. Assignment, I graciously and willfully accepted because I saw those people in me. I saw those people going through the same things that I had gone through during their time. My profile is basically that I wanted to join a team of commissioners dedicated to the work of the people, to seek ways to better enhance the quality of life for all the citizens of Edgecombe County as well as those in District Seven. The position to which I am seeking and to be a team player and, and to, as we pursue avenues in making our county a better place to live, work, and socialize. Why am I interested in a temporary position to you? As I stated earlier in our past interview, that should Reverend Wayne Heinz decide to come back, I will graciously give up the position without fail. I respected him enough not to run against him. He and I also had conversations about running in the, in the district and in that area. I also told him that out of respect for him, I would not try to pursue a position while, as long as he was there. I did, in fact, call him once this became available and I heard about it. I, I called him, was unable to get him for a number of days. And when I finally did get him, I talked to him at length. And I wasn't superior, wasn't really sure that he was really understanding everything that he was telling me. So I did not take it for wordless, I just wanted him to, let him know that, look, I'm applying for it, I'd like to have it, I'd like to carry it out in your name, and I'd love to have your support. And his words to me were exactly, "Thank you very much, but Eric Evans gonna take care of it." So I'm here to tell Eric Evans, take care of it. I know that I'm the best candidate in this, to be the commissioner for the Seventh District, simply because of my time, energy, and resources that I have given to Edgecombe County my entire life. More specifically, within the last twelve years, I also volunteered to serve in Edgecombe County. I also volunteered to serve, but all of my time spent here in Edgecombe County. There were invitations to go elsewhere as well. I chose Edgecombe County. I really became connected with the employees here with Edgecombe County when I joined the Department of Social Services Board. I did not realize we had the issues we had going on, dealing with not only employees with the county, but with the citizens. And then employees here, they just had such a daunting task of getting the jobs done, doing a whole lot more with a whole lot less. And for that, I was doing everything I possibly could to assist them in making sure they have a smooth transition from day to day. Listening to a lot of them gave me insight to the quality of life issues our citizens face on a daily basis. Things we took for granted. There were people coming into the social services who didn't have, walk in social services and asked for a pair of shoes. I had on a pair of shoes and I looked and couldn't believe that people actually would do that. But they did, in fact, come in to social services asking for things that they truly need. I saw that in me when we were growing up, when we didn't have shoes to wear. But my mama made a way and found a way out of nine kids to make sure that we had at least one good pair of shoes. And the others, we just wore them out till we couldn't wear them anymore. But that's Edgecombe County, that's the Edgecombe County I grew up in. I use that information that I got from them to help make a difference. I was voted later by my peers to become Edgecombe County's first chairman of the Human Services Board, for which we established in the year twenty thirteen. I spent many, many days and many road miles with a past town manager, Mr. Lorenzo Carmen, who I have much respect for, a man of wise, wise man of wisdom, intelligence, and respect. I have much respect for Mr. Carmen. During that time, we created, on this board, while serving on this board, with a number of, we had roughly about twenty-two people from throughout the community. And I've been before this board before making presentations, trying to get things for our health department, for our social services department, or whatever. During such time, we created a committee, S T D HIV Task Force, to help us to do what they are doing now. The G O T L, everybody know what that is, get off the list. Mr. Evans is orchestrator of that and Mr. Carmen, believe it or not, talked about that with me years before, that it came to fruition. Now, I'm glad to see it happen, but as Mr. Evans know, we put together a lot of information and Mrs. Harris know, as she said on those, many of those committees, we got together all the data we possibly could to try to get us off those negative lists. That being, at that time, the one of, being first in HIV testing, S T D recordings. And we were number one in all of those, we did everything we could to, to minimize those damage. And we worked hard with the health department to do that. And I would like to think that they are still doing it, even though my term expired about two and a half, three years ago. But I still stayed in contact with a lot of those. Again, those list of negative publicity things, we wanted to get rid of as it pertains to the communicative disease. This is okay, this is only one example of our approach to the G O T L, as I mentioned, and now, which is now a full committee. Moreover, my service on the Human Services Board dealt with several other challenges, such as personnel issues we had and equipment issues that affected us directly. Naming, more specifically, the N C F A S system, when that was handed down from the state of North Carolina. We worked hard and diligently and the, the employees, I didn't do it, don't, when I say we, I'm saying we as employees. Larry Wooden didn't do anything but push and guide and push and guide. But those employees worked hand over hand, day in and day out, night after night, and meeting after meeting, we were always here. The N C F A S has turned to N C slow. So they dealt with that, but they were still able to adjust, adapt, and overcome. And here today, I understand that the program is running pretty efficient right now, until such time as something else is available. Together, like I said, we were able to adjust, adapt, and overcome on those issues. Our focus was to continue to recruit the best and the brightest individuals to fulfill all the vagaries then and even now. Then I was also asked by the county manager during my tenure as the Human Services Chairman to participate in the hiring process of many of the department heads of Edgecombe County. From the county manager's office, to the Department of Social Services, to the Health Department. And all who are continuing to serve Edgecombe County even today, with a great deal of professionalism and very competent way. For those people, I'm very grateful and very thankful that they are still serving the citizens of Edgecombe County. With success, we all got navigated through the, also, I'm sorry, we also navigated through the COVID crisis of twenty nineteen. Where everybody did a little, so nobody would have to do a lot. Again, the people from the county, the employees stepped up to the plate. From the department heads out working with their boots on the ground, and so were the entry-level employees. Everybody I saw was doing everything they possibly can to help the mankind and citizens of Edgecombe County. For that, I was grateful and I always applauded them and talked to them at every opportunity I could. And for that reason, I guess that's why a few of them do remember my name. But in any event, all the problems, like I said, again, I just want to say, in essence of time, if you'd like me to go over my educational level as chairman, I was also a police lieutenant, as a matter of fact, I worked under Chief Mann here and who was a great man, great person. And I would never demise, demise anything that he's done for me, with me, or during the time. He's always been above the prey of doing things. And for him, if it wasn't, if I wasn't the best one today, I would vote for him. Not today. I was, matter of fact, in two thousand and five, I was promoted to the lieutenant, where I plan, organize, and execute plans of actions within the police department, supervise other police officers assigned to my skills, set up and plan community meetings and address crime issues, and work to halt towards addressing the quality of life issues to better the community. I did that from two thousand and five until two thousand and nine, until my retirement. Prior to that, I was a police detective and I basically did that from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and five. Investigate and design cases to gather facts and evidence to be presented to the district attorney for prosecution. Interviewed witnesses, suspects, plan and set up covert operations when necessary, wrote and obtained approved search warrants when needed, set up and planned community meetings to address crime issues. Skilled street-level gang investigator, which I gave a lot of my time working on street-level gangs and dealing with the gangs, not only within the Rocky Mount area, within the surrounding areas such as in Wilson, a lot of Wilson's, Pine Tops area, Tarburg area. I, the investigation itself led me to these different things. We started out with people, kids as young as nine years old. And I put together the plan, submitted it to the upper echelon at that time. Had the process been followed to a T, the way it was written, all of those kids now would be in their forties or some in their early fifties, which they would have probably aged out by now. But the process was to tackle them at the age nine, ten level, so that they could spread that around amongst all of that particular group and do a trend as, as it travels, so that we couldn't just stop gang activity all of a sudden with the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old. Because they were gonna do what they do, you spent your wheels chasing after them. So you gotta get it from the root, and that's where my target was, the root. And if had we done that at this time, Rocky Mount and surrounding areas would be much better if it relates to gang, gang activities. Also, I worked as a police officer within the city of Rocky Mount. I'm not gonna read all this, you know what police officers do, they patrol cities, streets and talk with people in accidents. And I'm not gonna just go through it, I pass them just along to you so that I wouldn't have to spend an enormous, enormous amount of time explaining it to y'all. I would like to also just recognize the fact that I, once graduated from high school, I joined the military, the U S Army. I served there diligently and I fell in love with understanding how to deal with people because I had no idea, coming from rural Edgecombe County home, who I was dealing with, why you deal with people the way you deal with them. And I learned, it was at that time that I had my first stench at what leadership was. I became the platoon commander for my platoon, which is about, at that time, about sixty people. And I learned the, the rules and regulations as it pertains to the military. Anybody that's been in the military understands what I'm, I'm talking about. But that's where I gained my first discipline on how to do, when to do, when not to do, and when, when to get things in order. I attended my basic training in individual training, I attended my basic training at Fort Dix, New Jersey, and also did my A I T training there. Then I was deployed to Germany, to Wurzburg, Germany, where I completed my permanent duty status, approximately six months for the I P C S, which is Permanent Change Station, back to North Carolina, which I served the last six months at Fort Bragg. It was then, when I got back to Fort Bragg, I decided I wanted to try another avenue, see if anything was available. I was asked by some individuals if I would like law enforcement. So I tried, I thought I was going to the highway patrol, but they passed me by. So I ended up starting my career here in Tarburg, where I served almost four and a half years, and about three and a half, three years in Whittakers, North Carolina, and remainder of my twenty-three-plus years was in Rocky Mount, where I served with diligence amongst friends and family that I appreciated. I'm also attended, my educational level is, I attended the administrative officer management program up in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, learning how to deal with people, how to manage your budgets, how to manage your city industry, how to manage your small communities and those types of things. So I attended that and completed that. I'm also a certified criminal justice instructor, where I currently still teach at Nash Community College. I teach an array of courses from sheriff's responsibilities in the courtroom, courtroom responsibilities of, basically, at one time firearms trainer, certified firearms trainer as well, with the state of North Carolina. I also received my bachelor's degree from Shaw University, Bachelor in Science, Criminal Justice. Prior to that, when I first got out of the military, I used my V A to, my G I B U, I'm sorry, to help me obtain my first two-year degree, which I used where, Edgecombe Community College. I was back at Edgecombe again because I knew they had great resources there and I graduated that. My first A A degree in nineteen eighty-four, in nineteen eighty-three, I'm sorry, with a criminal, a associate degree in law enforcement option. I continued on to attain a second A A S degree from Edgecombe Community College. This time I did in correction, correctional law. So I got a good background in how to deal with the criminal justice side of enforcing the law and dealing with those offenders once they have. My skills are, is that I served as the chairman of Edgecombe County Human Services Board for the eight years and also served as chairman of Edgecombe County Department of Social Service Board for almost four years. An inexperienced gang investigator and I completed comprehensive gang investigators report of activities in and around Rocky Mount areas, I explained to you before. Just a couple of the awards I've got, I had too many to list and I didn't want to bore you all, so I just put a couple up there. I was, when I was in Tarburg, I was voted Officer of the Year in nineteen eighty. And when I went to Rocky Mount in nineteen eighty-seven, I was voted Officer of the Year in nineteen eighty-eight. That spoke volumes to me, when your peer group can come and actually put a vote out and say, well, look, I think he's the best officer out of the hundred forty-five or two hundred officers we had there at that time, spoke volumes for me. And I knew that the work I did had to be an example for all, and that's what I continue to do. Couple of the organizations I would include, I'm also a member of the North County, of North State Law Enforcement Office Association, where I'm a lifetime member. I'm also a current member of my Masonic Lodge, Unit two sixty-four, which I, in Rocky Mount, North Carolina. And those are basically it, that is basically it for me in a nutshell, if I could try to keep it within my timeline. And I know Eric knows how I am, when you say ten minutes, we don't mean eleven. So we, I know, we don't try to stick to it. So I like to say that I not only believe in the past, in that I'm the best candidate, I know for a fact that I am. This is not to deter anybody, to tear anybody's reputation down. I know that I'm the best candidate, the best fit for Edgecombe County. And I'm just like grits in water, just stir. And I'll be ready to hit the ground running and ready to face the challenges that District Seven in Edgecombe County has to offer. And if I could say anything in the words of the old song from a couple of my neighbor, former neighbor and friend, Janice Brown and Reverend F C Barnes said, "May the work I've done speak for me." Thank you.
Any questions on Mr. Wood? Are there any questions of, from, for either of the candidates? If not, I'd like to thank both of you for your presentations. It looked like, if the board, if the board makes a selection at our freshman year, would be a police, a former police officer. Based on the experience of both of you, at this time, I'll, I'll say to you, is anything that maybe either one of you have said or thought about that you need to say to this board? In closing out your remarks, is there anything that you think you have not said that you think this board, would help this board in making a decision in your favor? You got one minute to think about it.
I would just like to tell y'all, in case I don't want it or you don't vote for me, I'd like for you to. I would just like to tell y'all, in case I don't want it, or you don't vote for me, I'd like for you to...
Mr. Mann, you gotta thank, as I say. Thank both of you. Let's thank both of you for your community service, for your long years of service for this community. And as was stated earlier, we will be making that decision at our October meeting, and if you're not here, you will be notified. And whoever is, has voted on it at that time, we will, we will contact you in terms of making preparations to be sworn for our November meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Mann?
Yes, sir.
That's the plan of action, okay? That is our plan of action. Anything else from the boards that is related to this adjournment?
Thank both of you gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hearing none, next.
Mr. Chairman, you have tonight, under contracts, you have a change order. This is for the Wooton Company. This is change order number seven, that actually decreases their contract geotechnical services that were not needed for this project in Water and Sewer District Six, reducing the final contract by five thousand four hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents. Also, you have the supplemental to the master service agreement with Smith Gardner Incorporated. As you'll recall, I guess a couple of years ago now, we went out with a request for qualifications. Smith Gardner was selected to provide engineering and consulting services for our landfill operations. You approved a master contract. At that time, each year, they present to us the details of specific work there to do. And so for this current fiscal year, recommending the total not to exceed contract amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, which is available in budgeted funds. Recommend that you approve both. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Is there a motion?
I'm opposed.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? It is approved. Hearing, hearing nothing else, nothing else that we can take care of, is there a motion to adjourn?
I do, just to point out, you have at your place some upcoming events. Just wanted to remind you of those things coming up.
Is there anything else to be brought to the Board of Commissions?
Motion to adjourn.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed?